Are we ready?
Mine's around somewhere.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Call the roll, please. Mayor Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Bateman.
Here.
Mr. Goodyear.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Ori.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Here.
Mr. Ping.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. With us tonight, we have our Assistant City Manager, Chris Weinich, Director of Finance, Mark Medler, Clerk of Council, Misty Clark, City Manager, Dave Kennedy, City Solicitor, Joe Braun. Oh, our Police Department is well represented with Captain Dan Gangler and Chief Michael Gabrielson. Chaplain Spence is also here. Our Human Resource Director, Julie Robinson, is in the back. Let's see, former Mayor Rob Weisgaber and former Council members are all in a row. Pat Mays, Kent Blair, and Todd Osborne. You do. So you shouldn't be talked. All right, welcome, everyone. I think we're going to change the order just a bit and start with the Police Department, who has three in a row. Want to start with that one? Captain?
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, Council, thank you for this opportunity. Today, we're here to honor Chairman Larry Mayne, Chairman Dakota Parks, as they celebrate their five years of service with the Loveland Police Department. Larry came to us from Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. Currently, he's a School Resource Officer. You may see him sometimes in the summer on his bike. He's one of our bike officers. And he just recently decided to volunteer his services to help with our Qantas, to help with the Qantas program with our students that's just starting up this year. Thank you for that. Larry's a great School Resource Officer. For those that don't really know what that is, it's quite a little bit different from standard policing, and you have to have a certain mentality and a certain drive to do that job. And I think he was a little surprised at the beginning, but he's been doing very well. We're very proud of him. Dakota comes to us from Adams County. He is our baton instructor. He's also an instructor for our traffic stops and officer safety. And he is our primary field training officer. He just recently trained our last officer and is about to be the primary for the one that we just hired recently, Madeline Herb. Dakota's very dedicated, as is Larry. He's very well-known on the road. People come to him for help, and he's great both with the citizens and with staff. They're both great additions to this department. Proud of both of them. Two different people doing two different jobs. But the city is much better for having both of them. So I congratulate them on their five years of service.
And we have goodies for you, Dakota. So I think we've said, I've certainly said it enough. I think our council members say at every chance we get how proud we are of our Police Department and each and every member of our Police Department individually and as a whole. We are a very well-served community and are lucky to have every single member of that department. So congratulations to both of you. Hopefully, we'll be doing this again in five years and thereafter. You have to say something now.
Well, again, just thank you very much. Very happy to be here to represent the citizens of Loveland. And there's not a day that goes by that I don't regret coming here. And everybody's been very warm, open arms, warming. The school's been fantastic, and just wanted to say thank you.
I want to say thank you to the City of Loveland for the opportunity again from five years ago. It's been a great role with the city, great agency to work for, great leadership. And can't be here without my wife and my children. So I appreciate it, and thank you guys all for your time.
All right, so let's go. We're going to do pictures.
We know what that is.
Get these two pictures. What? You know what?
I tried to get another picture. Well done, Larry. Shake it.
Congratulations. Do you want to get the family? Now we'll do.
Want to step up? Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Staff, everyone joining us tonight, including all the officers that are here, Command Staff, and family members who are in attendance. It's an honor to stand before you as we recognize and celebrate the dedication and service of some of our finest, five years of service. This evening, in addition to acknowledging two of our officers for their years of service with this great community, we have the privilege of announcing the promotion of Officer Walt Griffith to the rank of Lieutenant. This is a significant moment for LPD. Not only are we recognizing the leadership, professionalism, and experience of a remarkable officer, but we are also witnessing the continuing commitment that our City Council and staff have made to strengthening our Police Department. The promotion of Lieutenant Griffith marks an important investment in our agency. The addition of a fifth Lieutenant to our staff allows us to provide consistent leadership on all four patrol squads, something we were unable to do before this position was created. This move ensures our officers always have the support they need, and it enhances our ability to serve the community with excellence. Lieutenant Griffith brings a wealth of knowledge to his new role. His law enforcement journey began in 2011. Throughout his law enforcement career, he served in numerous critical roles, including patrol, detective, SWAT team member, and a member of the Brown County Drug and Major Crime Task Force. His commitment to public service didn't stop with law enforcement. Since 2003, he served with the Georgetown Fire Department, rising from the ranks of cadet to firefighter to lieutenant. Walt joined Loveland Police Department in December of 2023. He has been assigned to the Patrol Division during that time, where he has proven himself to be an invaluable asset, both to our department and to the community we all proudly serve. As he steps into this new leadership role, Lieutenant Griffith will be supervising one of our two night squads. We are confident that he will continue to bring the same level of dedication, integrity, and professionalism that have defined his character. Please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Walt Griffith on this well-earned promotion. We are proud to have him as part of our leadership team. Mayor, if you would, go ahead and administer the oath of office, and then we will have Walt's wife, Tori, pin his badge.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Walt Griffith.
Solemnly swear that I will.
Solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Loveland.
Of the City of Loveland.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Lieutenant.
The duties of Lieutenant.
Upon which I'm about to end.
Upon which I'm about to end.
Stephanie wants, yeah.
Yep, 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 yep.
This is why we did the police first.
There you go.
I'd like to thank everybody, especially my family. Without them, I definitely would not be in the position that I am in. I'd like to thank everybody for this opportunity. I hope that I meet everybody's qualifications. Thank you.
Don't do pictures. Be hiding.
Congratulations, Walt. I would include them. I'd include the kids.
Yeah, let them enjoy it.
You're in the middle. Well, everybody get together. Smile, smile. It's the perfect time to sneak up.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good thing. Exactly. Right. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Wanted to take a moment. We don't do this very often, but we wanted to give a little special recognition to an employee with our Public Works Staff, specifically one of our water treatment operators, Ryan Singleton. As you are aware, the City of Loveland operates a Class II water treatment plant serving both Loveland residents and parts of Sims Township. This designation by the Ohio EPA requires us to maintain staffing that includes, at a minimum, a certified Class II operator. We are proud to not only meet, but exceed those standards. Currently, our team includes Ricky Gregory, a Class III Certified Chief Operator, and Rob Hayden, a Certified Class II Operator. Today, we are thrilled to congratulate Ryan Singleton on recently passing his Class II certification exam, a remarkable achievement. To put this into perspective, obtaining a Class II certification is a rigorous process. An operator must first pass the Class I exam with a score of 70% or higher, an exam with only a 40% pass rate over the past five years. After gaining at least one year of experience, candidates can sit for their Class II exam, which has held a pass rate of approximately 35% in that same timeframe. These numbers highlight the dedication and effort required to reach that milestone. With Ricky Gregory holding a Class III certification and now two Class II certified operators in Rob Hayden and Ryan Singleton, the City of Loveland is exceptionally well-positioned for the future. This strengthens our operational continuity and ensures reliable backup coverage in the event of absences. While many municipalities are facing challenges in hiring and retaining certified water treatment professionals, Loveland continues to build a team of highly qualified and dependable staff. This achievement is even more significant in light of industry projections, which indicate by the end of 2028, 41% of our water operators are likely going to be entering retirement. Ryan's success underscores our commitment to sustainability and operational excellence. So once again, I would like all of you to please congratulate with me, Ryan Singleton, on passing that Class II exam.
Well, on behalf of Council and the community, I want to thank you because it is. It's truly, it's an undertaking that was not easy, and it's an investment in our future as much as your own, and we appreciate that. And I don't give these out often. They're very, they're very, what's the word, Misty? I don't know what the word is. If it's, not everybody gets one, but it's a merit one to thank you for your meritorious service and for your efforts in doing this. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for these opportunities since I've been here at the city, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city and growing in my position. Thank you.
Well done.
Good night, Thomas. Congratulations, sorry.
Thanks for your achievement. Congratulations. Great job.
Thanks.
Congratulations. That's right. All those things that we don't like to do.
That's right.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's too hard.
And Matt. So part of this is oath of office, but it's also trying to introduce everyone in the community to our new Downtown Groundskeeper, Matt Lowe's camp. This is, we always say there's a couple positions that are sort of the face of the city. The ladies at the utility office are often the first people that are residency when they come in, set up for utilities. But throughout pretty much the month of April 1st through October, one of the most popular, most located, active areas in the cities of Downtown District. And a few years ago, we decided that we really thought that that area needed a little bit of special attention, just an extra touch. That whole, we're opening the door for the, to the Downtown District each year. And so we advertised for this position with Matt, and we couldn't have been happier to find somebody. On his first day, I got a text from our Public Works Director, Scott Wisby, who said, "Like the new guy, hustles, and he has great personality." For those of you who know Scott, that's downright mushy because that's about all you get from him. So that means a lot, Matt, believe me. Matt's here with his parents. He's Loveland 2022. 2020 grad. And it's pretty simple. It's a difficult position, but it's also pretty simple. You just got to care. You got to look at the Downtown District like it's your own yard. You can be proud of what it looks like. This, Matt will take a more active role in sort of helping us prep for events as they come in, and he'll own those. Those are, those are a big deal. And we just simply want the city to look best when people come into town. And Matt has already shown that he, A, that he cares, B, that he hustles, and that he has a good personality when Matt comes across the resident, a visitor, or anyone in the city, because his name's on there. We all know, Chris and I know, without a shadow of a doubt, that he'll always represent this city top-notch and with the customer service that we strive and we've always strived for. So I just want to say to everybody, welcome, Matt, to the community. And the mayor is going to give you the oath of office.
In a moment. Just so you know, we didn't use to do this, introduce new employees. We do it for a couple reasons. One, otherwise, the community doesn't ever get to see you and know who you are, and neither does Council. So this is our way of getting to know who you are, our new employees, and you to meet Council. The other reason is to sort of reinforce in employees' minds that we are a small community, and you represent this community. Whether you're on duty or off, people know you, and they recognize you, and you are representing the City of Loveland and this Council and its residents, everything you do. And so kind of, we'd like to sort of impress upon new employees that that's an expectation of ours. I'm not worried about you. I'm sure you're going to do just fine, but we do take that kind of serious, given our small community, and people will see you and go get to know you. And I think you're going to do a very good job in this position, and I think you'll enjoy it. So we're glad you're here. You ready?
Yep.
All right, aye, state your name.
Aye, Matthew Boesken.
Solemnly swear that I will.
Solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
Charter and Ordinances.
City of Loveland.
City of Loveland.
Will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of groundskeeper.
The duties of groundskeeper.
Upon which I'm about to end.
Upon which I'm about to end.
Congratulations.
Thank you for the opportunity. I don't know what else to say.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Welcome. Welcome aboard.
Now we have to do a picture. Don't think you're getting out of here. All right, no, you don't have to stand. Heck no. I stole that.
All right, thank you again, Mayor and Council. Another bit of good news, filling positions here at the city with some great, great talent. As you know, we established the Marketing and Communications Coordinator position just over four years ago. That position was needed for not only staff and Council, and it was needed for the community, to get our word out there, to, you know, get everything out there that everyone wants to hear and needs to hear. That position for the last four years was filled by Krista Rose, and she held that since its inception. And she did a fantastic job, took it to, basically, we had no idea what we wanted exactly. We had a framework, but she was able to create that position kind of from nothing. And we're excited to be able to continue that. That position oversees all city communications and outreach, which includes social media, electronic and print newsletters, emergency alerts, event promotion, and media coordination, just to name a few. With Krista moving on, we concluded a very thorough search. And Stephanie Watson, throughout the process of that search, clearly rose above the rest, and we're excited to have Stephanie on board. She's going to be a great asset to our team. She's been here for about a couple weeks now, and already, just the eagerness, the willingness to learn. She told me, which I don't believe completely, but she told me the other day, she's like, "I think I got this." I'm like, "There's a lot more." So, but it's going to be great. Stephanie's, her personality is one that's going to fit in great. She's got a smile on her face every single day so far coming into work. That, you know, alone is a huge step. You know, you got to, you got to enjoy what you do, and I can tell Stephanie's really going to enjoy this position. She's here with her, with her family, her twins, William and Sophia, and Andrew. There he is. He's the smart one. He was telling me, telling me stories earlier. He's a smart kid. Little bit, little bit about Stephanie. She's a graduate of Xavier University with a degree in public relations. She brings with her 16 years of experience in the PR and marketing field. She has supported a wide range of public, private, and nonprofit organizations throughout her career. And based on the beach theme, she's already put in her office. She's going to be, she's definitely going to bring a light to us, light to here, and I think paint everything in a positive light, which is, which is great. So we're thrilled to have her on board, and we'll be here to support her throughout the process, and we're excited. So without further ado, Stephanie, do the oath of office with the mayor.
Here we go. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Stephanie Watson.
Solemnly swear that I will.
Solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Loveland.
Of the City of Loveland.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Marketing and Communications Coordinator.
The duties of Marketing and Communications Coordinator.
Upon which I'm about to end.
Upon which I'm about to end.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
Congratulations to you, too.
Thanks for being here. She took the oath. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Coming down, yeah? Yeah, she got us like a part, a second for free, yeah.
Yes.
She took the oath right off.
It's just, it just came.
Not sure what to make of that.
That was awesome. I'm not either.
Do we have a, I don't think so. No one's here from Tiger sing? Okay. All right, open forum. First, Kaia Bargan.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I come with a little different message today from the library. As you're probably aware, public libraries in Ohio are facing a funding crisis with the proposed state budget. The Ohio House's current budget proposal eliminates the public library fund and replaces it with a flatline item based on per capita. This might sound reasonable, but in reality, it means a $14.5 million loss for Cincinnati and Hamilton County Public Libraries starting next July, which that amounts to 30% of our budget. Right now, about half of CHPL's funding comes from the state. This proposed change puts the future of our programs, materials, and even our building operations at risk, not just for CHPL, but for every library across Ohio. There are some libraries that solely depend on the public library fund. I became a librarian because I love helping people. I started volunteering at my local Avondale branch down in the city as a team, worked at Miami University King Library in undergrad, and at the Hillman Library at the University of Pittsburgh during grad school. And I've never looked back. So libraries are where people get support, resources, and able to just be and exist. So whether they need books, internet access, job help, or just a safe welcoming space, that is the library. that is the library. So I am asking for your help right now, or when you leave here tonight, because we are in the ninth hour. It is tomorrow that they will possibly vote on the proposed budget. That you email your representatives, you email the Ohio House Speaker Matt Huffman, and you email the Chair of the Finance Committee, Brian Stewart, to restore the public library fund, and tell them not to cut your library. Thank you.
Thank you, Kai. David Miller?
Thank you. David Miller, 251 Wall Street here in Loveland. I've got a similar request, I guess. The Loveland School District is the city's greatest asset. The prestige it provides is invaluable. However, the income tax revenue stream the district provides, as the city's largest employer, is also invaluable. At the State House, the Fair School Funding Plan is in its fourth of a six-year plan of implementation. The plan is designed to address disparities in school funding across the state, and backers around the state, including a pretty good group of people in Loveland, are urging that the plan is fully implemented. So I'm asking you, and anybody listening, anybody in the audience, to urge lawmakers to fully fund Ohio's school, fair school funding plan for public schools. If the plan isn't fully funded, the Loveland City School District may lose 2.5 million over the next five years. So it's about the full completion of the Phase N. In 2021, Governor DeWine signed the Fair School Funding Plan, which was supposed to be implemented in three phases to support public school funding. The governor has now proposed a budget that would cut public school funding by over 100 million across the state. Only 66.6% of the planned funding levels have been implemented so far. The Phase M was set to reach full funding by fiscal year 2027. Such major shifts in funding could lead to larger class sizes and reduced services in public schools. Sorry. In public schools, placing additional burdens on local taxpayers, that's us, at the local level, to fill the gaps. I urge you tonight to pass a resolution urging Governor DeWine and state lawmakers to fully implement Ohio's school funding plan, as they promised they would. What I'm gonna leave with you is these talking points. And if you do this, and Misty would probably get involved with this, email addresses, mailing addresses of the people that it should be sent to. This is data provided by the Loveland School District. And this is a mailer that you've probably received in your, at home, hopefully here at City Hall, so... But it was provided by the school district. And if you scan this QR code, and maybe, I'm gonna hand all this to Misty, and maybe she could pass this down to everybody, you could scan it tonight, and then you could also have on your phone the addresses and email addresses and so forth to the important people that the schools, the Loveland Schools are asking you to contact and urge full funding plan be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Becca Moats?
I almost said "good morning," which probably says how long my day's been. Good evening, my name's Becca Moats. I live in Simms Township, but I have kids at the Loveland City School District. I live in an interesting intersection. I am a nurse practitioner in pediatrics, which means I am focused on education, and I have four kids in the school district, which means it's very important to me. I am coming here today just to review also what Dave Miller was talking about. Loveland City School District scores in the top 3% of schools in Ohio. We have 85 districts receive more state funding per student than Loveland does. So Loveland's cell is, we are a top-quality district, working at a very fiscally conservative, very good budget. We have a great treasurer, we have a great superintendent, who are very, very conscientious about not wanting to create more levies or more concerns for our local community. As we all know, we have seen things like Tiger's Inc. and everything that our school district does for kids, and we don't want to lose those spaces. Like Dave said, our school district is potentially going to lose 2.5 million dollars over the next five years, and that number could change and become more. So that's a big concern. Our goal as a community is to come together and reiterate that we need that state budget, we need it for libraries, and we need it for our school district. We need to tell them that they need to protect the guarantee that they promised us with fair school funding, they need to continue the fair school funding plan, and then increase the state share minimum so that the state is supporting the school district, so we don't have to go back out to the community as often and say, "Hey, we need more money off the taxpayers' back." I, you know, I have four kids. My oldest, we moved here when he was in first grade, and we were able to see this child who had very strong ADHD with Loveland's support. Because I wasn't, you know, your first kid, you're like, "I don't know what I'm doing." But he, his teacher brought in the school psychologist and brought in the school nurse, and we had a meeting, and we went to his pediatrician, and within a month of him getting good management from the school and good management from his pediatric practice, his reading scores doubled. Loveland School District helped that. I would say the same thing when we passed a levy, we were able to bring gifted back. My third grader was able to, qualifies for gifted education, and she's able to receive those services because Loveland has worked really hard to be very, very, you know, fiscally management in a good way. She actually started wanting to be an astronaut when she was two at a library, from a story time, so she's a very, she's a very fun kiddo. Again, just reiterating, that would be great to see our community come together. I'd like to ask that you can pass a resolution, just like our Loveland School Board has, asking the state to continue their promise. Another idea would be that our Claremont County and Little Miami Chambers both wrote a letter to legislators. That would be a great way to show our support as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is a review and approval of the minutes from the March 26th meeting. Any changes, additions?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that on packet page six, the fourth paragraph says, "Mr. Bateman asked," I think it was really the beginning of Mr. Ping's line of questioning. So just wanted to note a small change in the minutes.
You're saying it was Mr. Ping?
I'm saying it was Mr. Ping that asked if it was correct, that not long ago, the city hired a staff member whose primary responsible responsibility was to manage public records requests.
Is that a Scrivner's error, Joe, Mr. Braun? Okay, so we don't need a motion, so the Scrivner's error, change it to Ping. Is there any other changes? All right. That noted, can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
I'll abstain since I wasn't here.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, next we have a public hearing. Someone care to make a motion to open that public hearing?
To be open the public hearing to consider issuance of license to 123 Railroad Avenue.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori? Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
No one signed up to speak, so we have a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, so we have the second reading of the ordinance that the public hearing was regarding. Is there anything to add?
No.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, comments regarding this? Want to go ahead and read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement for property adjacent to 123 Railroad Avenue with Weststerfield Holding LLC.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ordinance 35 is adopted by a vote of seven.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy?
Tonight, I wanted to discuss with council the West Loveland Avenue Streetscape Improvement Project. I think we've talked in great detail, the city council authorized the completion of four master plans over the period of four years. Strategic Downtown Master Plan, Nisbet Park Master Plan, Conference Master Plan, Downtown Streetscape Plan. Chris and I will tell you that there are elements of all four of those plans that are either completed, funded, or in the planning stage. The comprehensive master plan alone was the impetus for pedestrian connectivity and the impetus for what we will someday see as a complete and total revitalization of the Loveland Duro Corridor. Goes without saying, we've done many aspects of the Nisbet Park Master Plan already. One of the plans is the Downtown Streetscape Plan, which is, I think, across the board, everyone will agree, is completely needed. And this is much, much, much more than simply fancy sidewalks. This is sidewalks, curbs, storm drain upgrade, sanitary sewer through the first two phases, new street lighting. But more than anything, I was thinking about this today, it's also the first step to meeting what Cindy Kessler sort of envisioned our downtown tree canopy would be. It's all included in this aspects of it. For those of you who got to see that vision of what Cindy has, well, this is a big part of what we do within this master plan. So we've been working hard to get this funded, but in all true honesty, we sort of put all of our eggs in the Appalachian Community Grant Program. There was $500 million that was available. We threw considerable, multiple phases of the Downtown Streetscape Plan into that application, and those were not funded. So what we've sort of shifted gears, and we have already submitted for two, to two funding sources. We've recently identified two more potential funding sources. The city has submitted to the High Public Works Commission and the Appalachian Regional Commission. We've also are looking at other sources. One of the big aspects that ultimately comes out when the city applies for grants is whatever they want to call it, but we call it readiness to proceed. And that's an important element, and it's a scoring point of it. One that we're working on currently, that is front and center, and I think it shows to a funding agency, you care enough about this application, do you get the engineering going? And we do. And Phases 1A and 1B is basically the West Loveland Corridor, or 1A and 1B is basically the way we breaking it down between north side and south side of the roadway. This particular phase, we want to get moving on now, A, because we're applying for funding, but B, because this is the one phase Metropolitan Sewer District will be participating in. They'll be actually doing sanitary sewer mains from where they stopped at on East Loveland at Third all the way to the bridge, and then they will be done in, they'll be done in the city. That is a big part of this. That plays into what I'm asking you tonight, is not only is the engineering, but they will be contributing towards the design, similar to what we did when we did the East Loveland Bridge Project. If you recall, the city council approved executing an agreement with Burgess and Nyepel to do the engineering for the sanitary sewer main. City was fully reimbursed. It's just easier to have one eyes on the project. So what this request to you tonight is, is to authorize me to execute an agreement with Choice One Engineering for Phases 1A, 1B. We are actively looking at funding Phases 2A and 2B, which is basically all of Carl Brown from the back end in Nisbet Park down to, for lack of a better word, Cindy's. We are looking for funding, but we're not quite at a point where we need to pull the trigger on that engineering. So this would be 116,300. City would be reimbursed for Metropolitan Sewer District in a total amount of 43,200 of that. This will move it along, it will help our readiness for siege points, and once funded, and we feel comfortable that at some point we will get this project funded. We're juggling multiple funding sources, we're also juggling timing with the sesquicentennial, so we're trying to get a lot of this done. But I think, as you see in the supporting pictures, and a perfect example is where Lebanon is today, is where we hopefully will be in a few years with some of what they've done, mixing in pocket parks with nice streetscape, good sidewalks, good lighting, and most importantly is the street trees.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Hart?
So just, just so I'm clear on what we're doing here. So this is a, this is a, we're funding a design.
Yes.
So that we are then ready to apply for other funding sources to do the project.
Yes, technically, we have submitted three applications to date. We can adjust those applications into 2A and 2B if we get them and come hustling in here to get those under design. But 1A and 1B, basically, West Loveland is most timely now, mostly because Metropolitan Sewer District needs to start working with us.
So was there any indication that we didn't receive any of the other grants because we weren't ready?
One of the applications we submitted is contingent on another one that we haven't yet heard from. The other one was a congressional appropriation, so we would hear about that later. That's been submitted. The third one is a special solicitation for the Ohio Department of Transportation that actually was recommended by them that the city consider applying. That's due May 1st, but we clearly need to be able to say to them, for the amount of money we will be requesting, that we are at a point with the project that I can say it's under design, which technically, you will become tomorrow.
And then lastly, is there any, is there any chance that any design work that gets done now becomes outdated?
No. No.
Unusable for grant applications if we miss on those?
No, because this design work is, the sidewalk, the storm drainage, nothing will change. We'll be making some modifications to the water main in town, and then you can't, you can't just simply put trees in the ground. You have to put silver cells, and those are pretty significant. No, this will put us in a position to be, go right to bid. This also includes construction administration. Not all of this will be even expended until that point in time.
Thank you.
Ken?
I got it.
Mr. Bateman?
Just a question around the relationship that this design and construction services has with MSD. Would they be including that as part of their design, or is that separate in terms of the MSD sewer main replacement?
Yeah, so Choice One would work specifically with Metropolitan Sewer District, basically get the parameters of the existing conditions. They would be doing the full design. If whenever possible, Metropolitan Sewer District can have someone else do the work and pay, it is just that much easier. They have so many balls in the air, so this is what they prefer. This is their, this is their preferred mode of operation. It's exactly what happened up on East Loveland. We did all the design, we constructed it, they paid both for their share of the design and their share of the construction, and as you saw, their share for the upcharge.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
Yes.
Make sure that this was all gonna be rolled under.
Oh, it's all one, yes, it'll be one part.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Just in regard to the trees, I just noticed the project details on page 26 reference that all existing trees are to be removed. I can understand why they need to do that if they're installing sewers. But it then also has that 12 tree wells will be installed. I'm just wondering, is that an even exchange, or are we gonna have more of a canopy?
Oh, yes, yes.
More trees than before?
We actually, not that long ago, just had to remove the tree in front of Platter Room Records. It was rooting up to such a point. The majority of the trees, I believe, we may be able to keep the trees at the entrance of the bike trail on West Loveland, but we lost two with the fire, we lost two near Playable and near Platter Room Records. If you recall, one of the most unique phases of this particular project is that the parking in front of the Brown Building goes away, and that becomes a big plaza. And so, yes, it'll be And, uh, so yes, it'll be more than an even exchange. We basically have trees that will never reach the full growth, they're not been planted correctly. And, um, the, the, the Streetscape Plan goes into real detail, design on exactly what trees are to be removed and which ones are to be.
That's good to know, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? All right, read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Choice One Engineering for professional design services, bidding and construction supervision services in furtherance of the Downtown Streetscape Phase one A and one B project.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six is adopted by a vote of six, seven to zero, excuse me.
All right, this next resolution, annually, we, as a council, um, have the opportunity to consider the performance of our clerk of council, Misty Clark, which I don't know what the breakdown is, but that's, she wears two hats, that, and, and then it's Dave's, uh, what is the official title?
Assistant to.
Assistant to the city manager. Um, so for our, our small role, um, we wanted to take this opportunity to at least give a, our, our, sort of our portion of a, of an increase to, to Mrs. Clark and me, and this city runs very well, we talk about it often, all the wonderful things that, that, the trajectory that we are, we're on and how well the city runs. Um, Misty is a huge part of that, so. Does anybody have anything else they wish to add?
Just, I just second that, uh, uh, the praise around, uh, particularly around this role of, of clerk of council. I think, uh, the, the meetings are so well organized and so well run that we're able to, we aren't jumping from, from one topic to another, and they're all very well planned and, and, uh, so I, I would just ag- agree that, uh, that, um, in- incentives are, are well deserved in this case.
Any other comments? Mr. Hart?
Just, just a simple thank you. Obviously, Misty is incredible at her job, both of them, uh, as it serves this particular role. Um, a, a ton of work that gets put on her plate, and it's all done at an incredibly high level. So deeply appreciate your work for, uh, for the city and, um, thank, thank.
Thank you.
And I just also want to say that, you know, we see your hard work, we recognize it, and we certainly appreciate it. You're very good at your job, and very knowledgeable about what happens, and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. To read your own resolution.
Resolution increasing the compensation for the clerk of council.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, next we have, as you probably can tell by the way he's holding his head, Mr. Kennedy's employment agreement. Um, it's no secret, I, I am very blessed to work with Mr. Kennedy and have been, um, since, I think you were here about a year when I, when I got on council, you predated Mr. Kennedy by a year, but, uh, all the, all the good things happening in the city require a quarterback to make them happen. And he is, uh, Mr. Kennedy's sort of, certainly the brains and the impetus behind all of it. Um, and it's his vision on a lot of the things. Um, I, I know you and I were talking last week that it's just even the, um, Historic Preservation Committee.
Planning Commission.
Planning, thank you, commission. Um, that was, that was, uh, Mr. Mr. Kennedy's brainchild back in, I think, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen is when he mentioned it to me. Um, in which we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that, we wouldn't have the opportunity to, to have some say in what happens in our historic district but for Mr. Kennedy, and that's just one example. All these grants, the Streetscape, that, that, that all came from, from Mr. Kennedy and his thoughts. I think we're just extremely fortunate and, uh, really happy that we're gonna hold on to Mr. Kennedy for at least a few more years. So glad to have you and we appreciate all your work. Does anybody have anything they wish to add? Yes, Mr.?
Um, my eight years on council, I've seen Dave Ross. Uh, he was put on, uh, in, in city manager's position years ago and was stifled. And, uh, so some of the semantics that was going on in, in our council was, uh, rerouted or fixed, let's say. Um, Mr. Kennedy has just done nothing but positive, good things for the city, and it's just made a tremendous impact on the, the reason why we're number one in the state.
Right.
And others, otherwise, and all of that people talk about too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Goodyear.
Well, I mean, I, I obviously would reiterate what Mr. Ori said about, uh, and you, Mayor, about Mr. Kennedy's performance. I know, as you alluded to, that he feels somewhat uncomfortable about this discussion, about what's happening. But from my perspective, not only does the city benefit from having such a good city manager already, um, but as a result of this amendment to his employment contract, um, something's gonna happen that would happen anyway. Um, he's going to retire either way, and at this point, um, the city's gonna have him working at a reduced rate, um, and more to the benefit of the city. And so, uh, when I first started, when I was elected a year ago, I thought Dave was about to. And I was sad about that because I've seen, just as a resident before I was elected, what a great job he did, and I've heard nothing but positive things about Dave, so I've been on council and I very much appreciate his hard work. You know, I think about it, I see, I know, I see Chris and, and Dave, I watch meetings, they're always here. Um, we have landlords' meetings, Dave and, and Chris are always here. Um, you know, I don't, I can't imagine the number of hours in a year that he works. And so it's very much appreciated, this is definitely an appropriate, um, thing for us to do with, uh, Mr. Kennedy, and I just want to thank him.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Just thank you for your competence, but also your humility.
Mr. Ping?
Dave, I think you need to coast a little bit. Um, you're, you're leaving shoes that are gonna be really hard to fit, so you need to like, take it down a notch or two. No, it, Dave, Dave is a incredibly hard worker, I, you know, I've talked to him before about the number of hours that he puts in here, and having a small business that I put a lot of hours into, um, you do that because you care about the thing, not because of what you get paid, you do it because you care. And Dave is truly a, a servant of the city, and, um, you know, that, that's not something that you get by interviewing a hundred people and picking the best one, it's something you get just because you got lucky. So, thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, um, do you want to say anything?
I, I think at this point in my career, I, I absolutely, uh, am passionate about this community. I'm passionate about leaving it in a good position, and I think that the city was very blessed the day Chris walked in this door, and I feel a big part of what I have from this point on is to get Chris ready. Um, there's, you don't, you don't learn customer service or how to treat residents. It's a natural thing, and I knew the day Chris got here that he understood and feels the same way about how we treat our residents, and that's important. But I also think the, um, the passion and caring is just something that came, um, and, uh, I, uh, look forward to coming here every day, and, um, I enjoy getting the opportunity to work with this council, and I get an opportunity to work with Misty and Mark and Chief, uh, Chris. So, um, it's a real blessing, I think that, uh, I doubt I'll ever be in another community. Um, I've been with government for forty years now, and spent twenty-five years in a community that currently is, uh, flooding. It's all I could do to stay out of that, don't go run down there, let them do what they want to do. I will largely do the same thing when I leave here, I will. But I, I, I have things I want to finish, I really have a vision for what I think Nisbet Park can look like, and I have a vision for what this downtown Streetscape can, what's gonna happen on Loveland Duro Road. Chris is steering that ship, keeps me up to date on what's going on, and that is going to transform this city. And Chris is right there, right behind the wheel, taking everything it needs to be done. And I'm focusing a lot on the downtown area, and, um, it's a true honor to work with you guys. I think it was a bit of a, a stretch when I got this job, quite frankly. Uh, I was a bit of a, and I feel that I owe it, um, every day, I feel like I owe it to you, to the city, to prove that, that little bit of a wild card was worth your opportunity, and I, and I, I'm not kidding, I actually remember that process. I don't even know why I was here. And quite frankly, I didn't even make the final cut. And one of the top four dropped out, and I got a phone call from your headhunter that said, "We're required to bring four, we gotta throw you back in." I don't know how much chance you have. So I just want to say it's an honor and a privilege and, um, to be here and to work with the people I get to work with. Sorry, I got a little wordy there.
Standing ovation. Nice. All right, we are going to, uh, do this as a, it's an ordinance, we're gonna do this as a, an emergency. We'll go ahead and read it, please.
Ordinance adopting the amended employment agreement of city manager David Kennedy and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-eight is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, I think I have the, the next thing as well. Um, infill development design regulations. As we know, we don't, we don't have a lot of big plots of land that, uh, that are ready to be developed in our city. I think there's gonna be a, a whole lot more of infill developments, um, in our future. And it occurred to me that, uh, we really don't have, other than, it seems to me we ought to have some way, or at least look at it, I would like someone to look at it, some way to look at an infill development and what is around it and make sure that, that what is going in makes sense with, with the neighborhood that it's going into. Um, and we really don't have that at the moment. So zoning code one-one-one-five, one-one-one-five-point-oh-three, initiation of amendments, that does provide that, um, a zoning code amendment can be initiated by motion of council through planning and zoning, um, to consider. So that's what I'm asking for tonight, is if, uh, you all are in agreement that that's something that might be useful, we would be sending it to planning and zoning to take a look at that and to determine kind of what that would look like as a zoning code amendment. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I think that, um, seeing where we are at this point, um, and seeing what has happened in surrounding communities, uh, I think has given us a, a kind of a taste of what we probably don't want to see, um, as well as some of the things that we do want to see. I mean, I don't want to see everything that's negative that's happened but around us, but, um, there are definitely some things that, that developers, that benefit developers, that don't maybe necessarily benefit the city to a large degree. And it's, it's, um, it's absolutely appropriate at this juncture where we are as a city and, and the fact that, um, we are getting all these accolades around here and people are wanting to move here in large numbers. Um, it, it's appropriate that we make sure that's done in a correct way, in a way that benefits people that already live in this city. So I'm, I'm in favor of doing some, of taking that action.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Ping?
Um, just a comment that, you know, I, it seems like whenever these things come up, I always think of it in terms of just a reluctance to have too much regulation, too much government interjected into our lives. And so it's always something that comes to my mind, but one of the things that I've always felt differently about planning and zoning is that it's not the same sort of thing, because it's a set of rules. It's, it's no different than saying, "Well, I don't like government regulations, so let's get rid of all the speed limits." That doesn't make sense, we need to have speed limits, we need to have officers that can enforce that to make everybody safe. And in the same sense, if the developers know all the rules going in, you know, you don't pull the rug out from underneath them in the middle and, and all that kind of thing, but if they know the rules going in, then that, that seems fair and appropriate. So, um, I, I think it certainly is appropriate to consider this and to have some sort of, um, requirements. Uh, certainly, as you said, I mean, there's other communities around us that have, in some cases, some pretty onerous, um, requirements that, uh, require a great deal of expenditure. I, I know from my professional work, um, there have been more than one case where a developer had to spend, you know, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, more than they wanted to, simply because of those regulations. And those communities look nice because developers are forced to do that. So, um, like I say, I mean, I, I, I think on the one hand, you know, it, it, it kind of feels a little bit, um, much to, to overregulate, but at the same time, you have to control development in such a way that you don't get something that is, um, inappropriate for the community. And that's something that I think, uh, at the community level makes perfect sense, so I, I certainly am in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Yes, Mr. Bateman?
Just, uh, will, uh, comment on, both on what Mr. Hart and Mr. Ping have said, in that, uh, I think that the timing is, uh, i- is fortuitous, in, in the sense that just recently, in PNC, we had, uh, a similar request using our current guidelines, and it was fairly ambiguous, and it was challenging for us to recognize, uh, the whole way forward. Uh, and I do think, to your point, Mr. Ping, that, uh, providing more rules around this is actually gonna benefit, uh, developers as they look to, uh, to do innovative projects within the city of Loveland. I, I think that clearer guidelines, uh, and, and, um, e- examples of, uh, of what the community is looking for that, that aren't too restrictive, will be, uh, will represent a, a, a great benefit. So I'm looking forward to, uh, working on this, uh, in planning and zoning, uh, to try to better define and outline a, a vision for infill development in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I think we need a motion. Um, would someone care to make said motion?
I'll move to, um, place before planning and zoning, infill, um, legislation or regulation.
Is that good enough, Mr.?
It is.
All right, very good. Is there a second?
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, Mrs. Clark, anything else you want to say about this?
Um, only that council was asked to nominate, um, a business enhancement award, uh, select the business to receive that award. Uh, Mr. Hart nominated DVD Brewing. Council was also asked to nominate someone for the Louis G. Rockwood Community Service Volunteer Award, and Mr. Ping and Mr. Bateman nominated Cindy Kessler for that award. So we need a motion from council.
Mr. Hart, do you want to give a brief explanation of why you nominated DVD Brewing?
Absolutely, I, I think that, uh, what.
Can you pull, I think they're having trouble here, and can you just pull your?
My mic. Sorry.
Thank you.
A little bit. Um, I think that, uh, you know, obviously my, my entire recommendation is in the packet, but, um, I think that just, just a couple of key points, taking it, taking it, existing structure, um, just from a beautification standpoint, aesthetic standpoint, they've taken an existing structure, re- reframed it, represented to the community in a, in a, you know, very pleasing way. There, it's a very nice building, a very nice structure. It is at the entry point to the city, which makes it a, uh, a ni- really nice anchor point on the far end, far south end of Loveland Duro Road, uh, which, uh, it, yeah, obviously someplace we're trying to spur some economic development as we come down through there and, and can, and is, but a streetscaping plan and, and also work that Mr. Watch is doing on Loveland Duro currently. Um, but also they've, they've provided another community, uh, gathering place in an area where there was none previously. Uh, there's, it's walkable to a number of apartment complexes in, in the neighborhood, so, uh, it's provided another, another opportunity for people to get together. Uh, I think Dana down there's done a nice job, and I, I think it's absolutely deserving of the, the Business Enhancement Award this year.
Anyone have anything to add? Do you want to make a motion consistent with your nomination?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey? Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Motion, seven to zero.
All right, next, next is the Louis G. Rockwood Community Service Volunteer Award. Um, Mr. Bateman and/or Mr. Ping, would you like to explain why you nominated Miss Cindy Kessler?
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead because I, we were at the Warren County Municipal League, and I made Kip, uh, speak on our behalf at that, uh, meeting. So unless you have something to add, uh, Kip, I'll, I'll just say Cindy came to mind, uh, for me when we had the Tigers Inc., uh, crew here talking about. when we had the Tigers Inc. crew here talking about Monarch City USA. And they mentioned all of these things that enabled them to create this designation. And so many of them were initiatives that the city took that were really prompted by Cindy Kessler's presentation. And I think that while we may have, as we luckily stumbled into an excellent city manager, we may have stumbled onto lighting ordinances and tree ordinances on our own. But I don't know that it would have been with as much passion or as much timeliness as it was thanks to the efforts of Cindy Kessler. And so to me, it was, it was an honor well deserved in the sense that the amount of work that she did just from a planning and research standpoint to socializing the idea, to bringing examples of what she was talking about, visual representations of bad actions that we had, you know, unknowingly taken over the years and along with ways in which to improve them. So I really am happy to, to offer her this Community Service Volunteer Award. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Mr. Ping?
Oh, you did a good job.
No, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, would you like to make a motion consistent with your nomination?
Sure, I'll, I'll move to nominate Cindy Kessler for the Louis G. Rockwood Community Service Volunteer Award.
Thank you. Well done. Is there a second?
I will second that excellent motion.
That was an excellent motion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, we have a vacancy on our Arts Commission. And Lynn Ori has expressed an interest. I think she did previously serve on Beautification Committee. She's our current Valentine Lady. And I think she also had, did she not have artwork in the latest show? This is for an appointment for a term that ends actually December 31st of this year. So with your motion to affirm this appointment, I would appreciate that from someone.
Motion to affirm, second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ori?
Well, I can't vote because somehow it's related to her. I think it's a great nomination.
You abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Now we need a motion for executive session?
I'll move to go to executive session under Ohio Revised Code, Section 121, 2, to consider the lease of property.
Second.
Oh, yeah, let's vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.